...meeting for August 28, 2012, 7:00 PM. And if we could salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of the hearing of visitors, any visitors speak tonight? Having none, we'll move on to reading and approval of our minutes. Let me take a look at the minutes from June 26. Motion to approve the minutes of June 26 as presented or amended unless there's questions, comments? Motion by Ellen, a second. Kathy, al viva. The MASC, Mass 47th Annual Joint Conference is going to be held November 7 through the 10th, 2012, at the Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis, down the Cape. And in the coming months, we'll appoint someone to attend that conference representing Abington, correct?
Yes.
Great. And now I'll turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools for a report.
Under Personnel Administration, I have accepted the resignation of Megan Adams as a math teacher, accepted the resignation of Julie Colley as a tutor. I've accepted the resignation of David Crane as a science teacher, accepted the resignation of Shannon Harrington as a part-time library tutor. I've accepted the resignation of Mark Nutley as a history teacher. And appointed the following, or the attached and closed list support staff for the 2012-2013 school year. Additionally, appointed the following or attached advisors for the 2012-2013 school year. And then appointed the attached coaches for the 2012-2013 school year. Under other matters. Just before I do my back-to-school report, I'd like to just spend a little bit of time on the strategic plan. In each of your packets, you have a copy of the strategic plan and the brochure that was developed by the Strategic Planning Committee and then put together by Teri Sumitania, who gets all the credit, and I get all the blame for anything that you see wrong with it. There's a vision and a mission. The mission of the Abbotton Public Schools is to provide all students with relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged as responsible citizens and members of the global community. Now, the vision on the back, as you open it up, the Abbotton Public School District in partnership with families in the community is a model school system that provides opportunities for all students to think critically and creatively, communicate effectively, and act responsibly to achieve their highest potential in academics, arts, and athletics. We are dedicated to providing state-of-the-art resources for teaching and learning, technology and facilities in an environment that is safe and supportive, enabling students to become lifelong learners. Our students are prepared to face the challenges of the war of the future in an ever-changing world. There was a lot of deliberation by the people that you see on this Strategic Planning Committee, made up of parents, teachers, administrators, community representatives, representatives in the Education Association, different booster groups. And we deliberated for quite a while about that vision, and it's a vision of where we want to be in the future. It's a vision statement that talks about where we want to go because we are not there today, but it's where we want to go. And in the guiding beliefs, and there's just really two more things I want to highlight to you, and then just talk a little bit about the action plans, I promise I'm not going to read this to you. But under the guiding beliefs, something I know we can all agree in is that we believe in making decisions in the best interest of students. We've been through a difficult three years, and I found that when I put the pillow over my head at night to try to fall asleep after some of the trials and tribulations that we've been through, I know that we've made our decisions in the best interest of our students, and they've been difficult. And we need to rise out of this funding situation, and we need to rise out of the lack of resources that we have to do the job we need to do. And as we do that, we are going to continue to make our decisions in the best interest of our students. Because as I'm going to talk about in the opening of schools report, people worked hard, we had a good opening, but we're not where we want to be for our kids in terms of the resources and the funding and what we're providing. And that's where we want to go, and so that's what I need to talk about if it's ever going to change. We need to go to the strategic plan, and we need to use this to get those things for our school system. And so, we're going to do that by focusing on our goals and objectives in teaching and learning, the area of technology, finance and district operations, facilities, and community support. Each one of these will have an action plan that we'll update and bring to the committee regularly, and we will use this as a tool to improve the funding and the resources and what we're doing for children in Abington. This is our roadmap to get to that vision statement that I talked about. So, if you have any questions or comments, or just, I want to thank all of the people who served on this committee. I won't list them at this time, but I just, they're people who are invested in improving the life, health, safety, welfare, and the academic delivery for our kids. My back-to-school report. I really sort of tipped you off to what I felt like I should talk to you about in my back-to-school report. Today was the first day of school, and I want to remain very positive about it, and I want to focus on the good work that people did in the Abbotton Public Schools because they worked hard for kids today. So I want to tell you that we had what I believe is a good opening. But I'll also tell you that when we've got 30-plus students in our elementary grades at different grade levels, and we've got study halls at our middle school, and we have a foreign language experience that is a one-year, really, experience at our middle school, and we can't offer the AP that we want to offer to our kids at the high school, those are the things I would need to have, to have the kind of opening we all want to have for our kids in Abington. So I don't want to be negative, because what I saw were people who are dedicated to kids, working hard to do everything they can to give them a good experience today. And the kids in Abington had a good first-day experience, from what I saw. They all had their back-to-school outfits on, and their backpacks were perfectly organized for the only time probably in the school year, and they marched in and they marched out, and everybody got to school and everybody got home safely. A lot went into that. Our police department in Abington was out and about and helped us quite a bit today with their presence and crosswalk signs because we've laid off our crossing guards to fix budget problems we have.
We have one remaining.
We have one crossing guard, thank you. But last year we had...
Three, and the year before that we had eight, and then we had 16, but...
So, the kids had a good day of school today, it was a good opening, but it was because of people making it work for them. And so, I want to thank those groups of people that helped us make that happen. When I mentioned the police department, the highway department, the fire department, the building department, all of the buildings were inspected, they were appropriately up to code and checked. Our custodians over the summer worked very hard to get us ready so our buildings were safe and presentable because we want to make a good first impression when people enter the, you know, our schools, they know that they're a place of learning and business. Our secretaries and administrators, I mean, everything that we touch is touched by those people, and they did a good job with that. Our bus routes, with Carol Carney working over the summer to help us with our bus routes. Again, our kids got in and out today safely. Our food service program was up and running, and the people in that department did a wonderful job taking care of kids today, and I know they will throughout the year. So I need to thank all of those people. But for example, we don't have a school safety person anymore. We've laid that person off to make up and to help with the budget situation. And, you know, it would be better if they were there. It would be better if we didn't have 30 kids in a classroom, it would be better if we had a full experience at the Frolio, the way we want without study halls, and it would be better if we were able to offer especially the AP at the high school that I know we want to offer. So, we had a little bit of a situation with our bus passes. The US Postal Service may have 30 free or 40 free rides in and out of Abington right now because they're lost in the mail, but they were sent out, that caused some confusion. But our bus drivers know to take the children to school, and when in doubt, we want them to act in a way that's safe and puts our kids' needs first, and we'll check the identity and the bus passes when they get to school. So everybody got in safely, but there are 30 or 40 bus passes out there somewhere, who knows in what part of the country they're in right now, and if they get returned to sender, then I'll know for sure that we sent them out. But we sent them out. We had a leak in the Paul K. Smith Room. We had, I think anybody who was in Abington today knows that we had a lot of rain, and that's something that we're working to remediate. Felicia's working around emergency procurements to fix that right of way. That's something that's never happened to us, but that's an older roof, we had no way of knowing that was going to happen. I believe Felicia told me it was a vent that filled with water because the water came so quickly and the...
Around the vent, yep.
The roof couldn't drain. But that'll be remediated, and that room hopefully will be up and running again next week.
Tuesday, yep.
So. And so, we had a good opening. So, let me answer any questions that people may have. The next agenda item you have is a Safe Schools Report. And it was handed to you just a moment ago because what's occurring with this is that in the middle of August, I was told by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that the legislature was requiring that we create medical response plans for schools. And so we have a plan ready for you. You don't have to approve the plan because a plan is not a policy, a plan is a plan. However, we're also required to update our Safe Schools Policy. And so what you have, it was handed to you a moment ago, is the Safe Schools Policy. The reason I'm asking you to consider this tonight is because we have to submit the plan to the state. And there was some confusion about this in the Commonwealth. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is really just trying to catch up with the legislature that requires that we do this, so I can't blame the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Our legislature passed legislation that requires all school systems to do this. So, we found out about this finally on August 21st, which if you check your calendars, is what, you know, just last week.
Seven days.
So, this policy is as it has been in the past with two changes. On the first page, the bottom of the first page, you'll see in black lettering above, I'll just read A1 to you. The Superintendent shall cause to be undertaken an assessment of current safety standards and procedures, and further, shall cause to have developed a medical emergency response plan for each school in the district in accordance with the requirements of MGL 698, Section A. And so, that's the first change. It just cites the new legislation and what we're required to do, and we'll develop those plans. I have a sample plan for you that we're going to be submitting after this meeting so that we'll make the September 1st deadline. And then the other change in this is that the school safety supervisor custodians has been removed from this document, and because we don't have that person anymore. And so what this Safe Schools Policy really does is it requires me to make sure that there are assessments of the school building in terms of safety and security and standards. Procedures will be reviewed by myself and the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance with other district personnel, who shall review current practices with appropriate police contacts, the school districts insurer, and the district council, in addition to other parties, whom the Superintendent and building principals determine to have relevant information. So I can explain to you and describe to you what we do is, there's a fire inspection, there's a building inspection every year. We test the water for lead by the standards that the Department of Health provides. We do asbestos checks to comply with AHERA. The insurance provider, every three years, comes out and does an entire audit of the building. They check doors and railings and vents and to make sure things are in good working order and condition. And they give us a punch list. I review that with the school committee so you know what those safety concerns are. We review the deployment of safety cameras. We review handbooks annually, and you get information on that, both faculty and student. So, I'm constantly giving you, you know, reviews and updates on those things and making sure you're aware of what's going on, and we always stay current with that. All of our rosters are given to the police department, so if there's an evacuation, the fire department, alarm codes, keys. We review all of those things annually so that in the event that we had to evacuate a building, we know who is with us, and everything from bus accidents to events in buildings, whether it's a storm or a gas leak or some other threat to the schools. So, and then what this does in items three, four, five, and six is talks about how we'll be reviewing those things and giving you regular updates. Under committee action, that you'll review these with me, discuss the contents of the policies and the reports that you get. You'll get estimated costs for the changes that need to be made. One that comes to mind is fixing the bleachers at the high school, the old bleachers. We continue to fabricate steel underneath them to make them safe, they're inspected so that we don't have an accident or a collapse. And so, you know, I'd ask for your consideration to approve this policy as amended, and I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. The school safety officer that we no longer have, who, his responsibilities now fall to who?
A number of people. Building principals, assistant principals, Dr. Thomas, Felicia Michella, Peter Schaefer. But also, the, a small portion of it will go to our food service director, who will help coordinate the assignment of custodians if we need subs and replacements. There's also the ordering of supplies and materials that happens continually, and careful inventories district-wide of all of those products and things that need to take place, he'll be helping us with that. But that procurement makes sense through his office. And then there will be other portions that, you know, Jason Lynn will help us with. And so, really, all of the people that I just mentioned will be doing that job. And then, from, we have our former school security safety person, Jim Smith. From time to time, it makes sense to have him come back and do, for example, if we have to do training around CPI, which is the, we're required by the state to train a certain number of staff in crisis prevention intervention, which is the holds that they may have to apply to a student who could be out of control. And so, we have to have a certified licensed person train our staff. That license and certification costs about $1,500, and it's three days Springfield to do it. So you end up paying for the certification, you end up paying for the hotel expense for the person who has to stay out there and don't do full-day workshops, and so, unless, you know, if we drive back or whatever happens, but it's expensive. He's already certified, so it makes a lot more sense to pay him an hourly rate to come in and do that training for staff. It's a lot cheaper, so, makes sense. So we'll be parsing out all aspects of that job that way.
Thank you. Any other questions? We need a motion to...
I'd be asking for a motion to approve the Safe Schools Policy as amended.
Okay, we're going to look for a motion to approve the Safe School Policy as amended. Kathy?
Second.
Second by Mike. Al viva?
Thank you. Then the second item that I have for you is a sample in your packet of the plan that I talked about. What you have in your packet is Abington High School's Medical Emergency Response Plan. What this is, is a list of procedures that will take place and communications that will take place in the event of an emergency. Now, we already have hazardous response plans, much of this is already covered. This is really about updating the communication and making sure that what we have for a hazardous response plan fits what the state is requiring schools to have in emergency, medical emergency response plans. So, I believe we have this in place already, but the state continues to roll out boilerplate and the standards by which we will measure this to make sure we have it. In the interim, we will submit this as our plan. So, we have to sit, we'll submit one of these for each of the school buildings, this is just one for the high school, but the other ones will look exactly the same. Teresa, do you have some?
I don't think I have one.
Sorry. Again, this all, you know, was just unfolded for us really last week. So I apologize for this. I like to give you things quickly like that. But I won't, I don't need any approval here, this is from the state. This is boilerplate from the state. We're going to put our name on it and submit it.
And we submit one for each school or one for the district?
We submit one for each school building, and then we will go back and check our hazardous response plans to make sure that they meet this standard. So in another school committee meeting, I might have to bring back my hazardous response plan to make sure that the changes I made are considered by the school committee. The next thing I have for you is the memorandum of understanding between the Abington School Department and the Police Department. This should have been in the packet?
It is.
Okay.
That was ready.
I don't need your approval of this this evening. If you felt comfortable with it, it's something we can do, or I could, I appreciate the consideration of the last item, if you want to wait. The only changes here are that we have deleted the supervisor of security from the memorandum of understanding. What this document does is it outlines what we are responsible to do and what the police department will be responsible to do in the event that a crime is committed or there's a threat to commit a crime in terms of reporting standards.
And this is created in conjunction with the police department?
This was created in conjunction with the police department. I've corresponded with the Chief of Police, Dave Majewski, and he agrees with the proposed changes. He is willing to sign this when I provide it to him. And again, I'll leave it up to the committee if you want to, maybe bring it back next month, or if you want to consider it tonight.
Does anyone have any questions at all? The memorandum? I think I mean, as long as there's no questions and we're comfortable with the changes, which is just removing the employment that we no longer have.
Correct.
And I feel comfortable as long as it's made in conjunction with the police department to be in with.
We'll be responsible for the same standard that we were before in the absence of the school safety security person.
Okay.
We just have to find a way to fill that void with the people that I described earlier.
All right, well then I'd like to see if we can make a motion for the memorandum of the understanding to Abington School in the Abington Police Department? Mike, second. Ellen, al viva?
Thank you. You also, in fact, you have a memo from the state back, talking about the Safe Schools and the emergency response plan. Then the next agenda item is the appointment of me as a representative to the Board of Directors for Project Contemporary Competitiveness for 2012-2013, or PCC. It's a program that our students have gone to in Abington for probably the last 20 or 30 years. Mike, I don't think, I know it's been at least 20.
For 20?
And our students have the opportunity to go there and participate in, do you know how long it was?
I think the first class was a summer of 1975, or 1970, and I think...
Goes back to 1975?
Before that, probably, no, 1975.
Okay, so, I was wrong. Back even farther. And it's a wonderful program that our kids participate in every single year. It gives them an opportunity to experience a college campus and be away from home. It's a nice developmental piece for our kids in terms of growth and being independent, and at the same time, they're under the careful watch of people that provide academic programming for them that's exciting and enriching, that they want to participate in, and they create friendships, I'm sure, that could last a lifetime with people. And so, it's a very healthy experience for our kids. It's academic and exploratory in nature, and they stay overnight. Now, at Stonewall College. And in order to send our students there, I need to be, and they get a discounted rate, the parents, the district provides a small amount of money per pupil, depending on our total population, so that we can be a part of this consortium, and then really, it's paid for by the parents who send their children. But I'm required to be on the Board of Directors to help oversee the program if we're going to be members in sending students there. So that's why I would be answering any questions people have, and I'd be asking for a motion to approve my appointment.
And the children go during, I mean, I know they go, but the general public?
Good question, yeah. Yeah, they go in the summer.
Six weeks.
Yep, six weeks. They're talking about maybe reducing it a little bit because families are seeing, it seems as though more and more busy. But it's currently six weeks.
Questions? Motion to approve Peter G. Schaefer to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the PCC for 2012-2013. Kathy, seconded by Mike. Al viva?
The next piece, I am excited, and Dr. Gonzo's is not a plant in the audience, she's here tonight, not, she didn't even know, I don't think that she was going to get congratulated for her participation in this. And I didn't know that she was going to be here. Congratulations to Dr. Elizabeth Gonzo's, who represented Massachusetts, not just Abington, but Massachusetts, on the PARCC Education Leadership Fellow Team in Chicago this summer. PARCC is the Partnership for Assessment and Readiness for College and Careers. This new system, the PARCC, will replace MCAS for 23 states in our nation, and so, Dr. Gonzo's is working at a national level on our, on an assessment that's going to impact about half the states in our country. And the reason I want to congratulate her, and we all want to congratulate her and recognize her, is because... is because the information that she'll bring back to Abington will help us as we create what we are crafting for our students so that they're ready for this test. And so, in Massachusetts, I believe there were five representatives? There was a small number?
Actually, 85 teachers interviewed for about 18 positions.
Okay.
More of 24 people went, six of them coming from Kyren.
So, it was a small group, a small elite group, went to represent.
Nine for English, one for JARs, and nine for that.
And so, just wanted to give you some background on PARCC. They've developed some of the- some samples for people to start to implement. But a lot needs to be developed because I believe it'll all be computer-based. And they're actually developing the software and the technology to do the correcting of those assessments as we speak. It doesn't- it hasn't been developed yet, but they're working on that. So, I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything or miss anything.
Thank you for your time for doing this for our community, our children.
You're welcome.
The next piece I have for you is really informational. I've included a packet that talks about the new teacher evaluation tool. Now, what's important about this, in this you have standards and indicators for effective administrative practice for the superintendent, the standard for instructional leadership, the standard for- which is the first standard, the second standard for management and operations, the third standard for family and community engagement. And each standard has a rubric and a number of elements under that, indicators for accomplishment. The standard for professional culture. And I've also included the protocol for superintendent's visits to schools. I've included a sample of a sheet informational on a SMART goal. SMART goals are what we will all be developing, each one of us as educators, whether- no matter what your role is in the schoolhouse. SMART goals are goals that are specific, strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results-focused, the three Rs, timed and tracked. And so, what this means, and it's an effort to do, is a teacher will have an agreed-upon set of SMART goals that fit all of these indicators that they agree with a coach on. So, it's a collaborative effort to improve instruction. That's part of our goal in talking about having our directors be evaluators because they're the- they, I think, would do a wonderful job with it. Because when we have a math person seeing a calculus lesson, and they've worked on goals together in terms of superior instruction, the children will be better served working on a calculus lesson with a director of math, or a lesson in English with another English teacher, or in music, or in foreign language. You don't want me deciding what a good AP French lesson is because I took French in middle school, and then I switched to Spanish, and I took Spanish. Also, the collaboration that will take place between those two professionals will be a more open process and will improve instruction in Massachusetts. We're required to do this for the 2013 through 2014 school year, not for this coming year, but for the following year. So, this is gonna change things in Massachusetts. It assumes proficiency in the vast, vast majority of teachers. And then, it works toward getting them to exemplary. And then, now, out of all of the teachers, there are very few that are exemplary because exemplary means you're exemplary across the board daily on a consistent basis. It assumes proficiency. And then, there'll be a small number of teachers who are in a needs improvement category that will work more closely with an administrator on improving instructional practice. So, that administrators are able to focus on those people who need a different type of time and attention than the vast majority of educators in Massachusetts. That's the- if you- if people take nothing else away from this in Abington or our faculty and staff and here, that's critical that people understand that's- those are components of this. I've also included the administrative rubric at a glance for our principals, and then a professional practice goal for principal. That would be- this would be a sample of the SMART goal. And then, the teacher rubric in your packet, which includes four standards, 16 indicators, and then elements provided in that rubric. And so, what we're gonna be doing this year as administrators is this means that there are regular classroom visits, multiple classroom visits for short amounts of time, rather than the observations that we've done in the past where someone sits in the back of the classroom and scripts out all the things that go on in a classroom, and then writes a summary evaluation of the staff member. So, we're gonna be out quite a bit. We're gonna come up with schedules and be in classrooms for short amounts of time so that we can start to graph and schedule how this happens. Because if you imagine all of the teachers in Abington, and they're each going to be getting, you know, five or six 10-minute visits, we're talking a number that's really not manageable. And so, we need to start to manage it and start to test it. And it's healthy for us to be out in classrooms anyway, to be listening to the teachers and talking, seeing what's going on in the classrooms, listening to our students. And so, it's a good thing. We don't have the infrastructure to do this stuff. But we have a plan for it, and hopefully, we'll be able to put that plan into place for 2013, 2014.
As we move towards this, and we have, you know, a number of baseline visits that we anticipate getting for each classroom teacher, is the goal based on these new SMART goals is that you're building on what has come prior to them? Or is each session- how do we anticipate that happening? Or will we learn as we go?
We're gonna learn as we go. And you- the SMART goal is based on data that you collect. And that data, the teacher works with you to decide what that data's gonna be. So, if you have someone who's teaching reading, and they're in the third grade, and 70% of the students are at this reading level, the goal might be to move those students to another reading level. And that would be a SMART goal. But then, there'll be also a professional practice goal around teaching and learning, that things that teachers do in their classroom every single day that will also be reflected in the final evaluation. And everything in the classroom is looked at in that 10-minute period of time. You know, you look to see, you know, are the students focused? Are there- what are the assessments that you can see, both formal and informal in the classroom? We're reading professional literature right now on the classroom walkthroughs or reviewing that through the year. And it's important to- you reminded me, it's important to mention that although we will be testing, kicking the tires of this new system during the school year, we will not be implementing it. It will not be a part of the current evaluation system. We have an agreement about what the current evaluation system looks like. That's what we will hold to for this coming year. So, this is just to get a feel for it and prepare for it and pilot it without using it in the evaluative process, so we can do a good job with it.
We don't need to make any-
No, just wanna make sure. Because we're gonna make- we need to make some changes in Abington based on this. So, I want to give people the information as we go, rather than-
You'll be caring about it all year. We'll be doing regular updates. All our services will be around this home tool, most of our services. And it's really about individual plus team tools, so that'll be at the building level, but there's also district level. It'll be doing SMART goals for all of you. We'll be doing SMART goals for Peter. It's- it all goes from the top all the way. So, you'll be hearing it. I'll probably be doing reports every month, so you'll be hearing all about it. So, we'll be able to walk you through as well. And then, you all received the book last year, just in terms of, so you got an idea of, you know, moving from one model and shifting, thinking to a new model. But we have the benefit of this year to prep for it, but we need to be in compliance by September 13th. I mean, 2013, next year.
Thank you.
Dates to remember, we have new school Friday, August 31st, this coming Friday, for all grades 1 through 12. Monday, September 3rd is Labor Day. All school offices and buildings will be closed. Tuesday, September 4th, kindergarten first day begins. Wednesday, September 5th, we have Meet the Coaches right here at Abington, start at Abington High at 7:00 PM. Sunday, the September 9th, Jeffrey Coombs Memorial Race at the Woodsdale. The registration begins at 7:30, and the race begins itself at 9:00. Sunday, September 16th, our Music Parents Cafe here at Abington High School from 10:00 to 4:00. Thursday, September 20th, we have our first in-service early release for the entire district, correct?
Yes.
Now, we're going to report about subcommittees and move on to a report from Assistant Superintendent for Personnel Services.
Thank you. First is I would be requesting a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the 2012, 2013 school year. As you'll see, you have the list of the names and grade levels of all of our students and parents that have made the request. In kindergarten, we have one student for homeschooling. In first grade, we have none. In second grade, we have one. In third grade, we have one. In fourth grade, we have one. In fifth grade, we have one. In sixth grade, we have two. In seventh grade, we have none. In eighth grade, we have three. In ninth grade, we have two. In 10th grade, we have two. In 11th grade, we have none. And then, in 12th grade, we have two. So, that's a total of 16 students in total that are homeschooled and their parents requesting. So, they pass in all the paperwork. They pass in all of their paperwork, and then it's finalized and approved by our office. And then, we ask that you also approve. And they'll be receiving a letter and documentation, and then they'll have to forward all of their progress notes and how the student is doing in the homeschool program that they're using throughout the year. So, any questions on that? So, I just need that motion for approval.
Motion to approve the recommended home education program for the 2012, 2013 school years recommended. Ellen, second?
Second.
Kathy? Paul and Peva? Aye.
Great, thank you. The second is- or the rest, I should say. I have a long list here, but the rest is informational. In terms of our grants, I just wanted to give you an update on our grants. As you're aware, that we do receive grants from the state. And I just wanted to share with you this sheet. If you look in your packets, it looks like this. So, you have a breakdown of the difference between fiscal year 12 versus fiscal year 13, and what we've received for grants. For Title II-A, we have the teacher quality. Most of our grants do offset salaries, and then there's a portion of a couple of grants that are used for professional development. But the majority of our grants here in Abington are used to offset salaries. So, in Title II-A, we have teacher quality, and you see the numbers, and then the difference this year. We received this year $47,491, and the difference is we actually got an added $559. Under Title I, there's $166,783, and the difference is we have an added $20,135. In our grant 94142, which is a huge one, as you can see, and that offsets the majority of special education salaries, $508,345, and then that's a difference of an added $5,604. Where you'll see a big subtraction is the next one, under the Ed Jobs money. We received zero this year. Last year, as you're aware, we had $366,808. So, there is a difference of a negative there of $366,808. So, and that's what you've heard Felicia and Peter talk about regarding our funding cliff for next year. But that money, we do not have this year, and we're using circuit breaker money to offset that loss.
We're able to get by this year, but there's an operational funding cliff because there's no dollars to replace those dollars. So, we already know for FY14, we are- we're in the hole by $366,808 in that grant.
Correct.
And that- we won't get that back. That was the President Jobs money.
The next is under our Early Education and Care, and that's also under Special Ed 262. And the funding that we received this year was $9,681, so we had a subtraction of $31. Under our 632 Academic Support, which goes for MCAS math at Abington High School to support our students that are struggling in the area of math but need the extra support in order to, you know, finalize the requirements for graduation and receiving a diploma, we have $8,500, and that's a negative 800 is the difference. On 274, we have Special Education Program Improvement, and we're still waiting on that. So, last year, there was $23,686. We've all been calling all the districts and the Commonwealth, wondering why it hasn't been posted yet, and the state is waiting. They said that it will be significantly less from what we received last year. So, we're expecting also a negative there as well. And that's where a lot of our professional development comes from. So, you'll see that in total, in fiscal year 2012, we received $1,105,827. In fiscal year 13, we received $740,800, so there's a difference of $365,027.
Negative.
In the negative. Okay.
The other rein is, I think you're aware, we have the Carol White Grant. From- we worked with North River Collaborative with a number of other school districts. We employ a PE teacher at the elementary level under that grant. The amount of that is about $60,000 for material supplies and his salary. And so, that's the grant that provided the pedometers that you probably saw at home. And so, we have approximately, you know, just over a $400,000 operational deficit for next year, going into the budget season, the next couple of months.
Any questions on that? Okay. Moving along to something more positive, professional development programming. You'll see that there's two pages here, or back and forth. You'll see that we have listed everything that's going to be the focus in terms of our in-service for this year. And this also goes out ahead of time. Teresa Minahan will send it out on constant context so the parents are aware, just a reminder, as there is an in-service date, and children will be released early. But also, is this is what staff will be focusing on during that time. So, that people are aware that, yes, we do have professional development time, but it's focused professional development time. So, that has actually worked well, and we've received positive feedback on that in the past for sending that out, and we'll continue to do so. So, there's a variety of work that'll be done building-based as well as district-based. And you'll see, as you look through the packet, that every month, depending upon what grade level you're at, that you'll see certain types of data collection, curriculum work, a lot of movement in terms of assessments because it's all linked back to that supervision evaluation tool educator model that we're all preparing for. We also will be focusing on the full day, which is November 6th, which is also Election Day. And that'll be in the morning. We hope to hold it up here in the PK- not here, at Abington High School, in the PKS room, and then have a breakout session in respective school buildings in the afternoon. So, really roll out, you know, the big picture of what the whole model is, and then honing in on SMART goals. And then, in the afternoon, people have times within their own buildings to work on writing individual SMART goals as well as team SMART goals. And again, this is all practicing and getting everybody all set and ready so that we'll have a seamless transition when this comes into place in the fall next year. So, any questions in terms of the professional development that we have planned for this school year? Okay, great. The next piece is that you've heard me talk about coordinated program review for about two years. And you know that that audit happens every six years. We did really well in terms of special education and really well with civil rights. And we just received our ELL, ELE, English Language Learner Report back, and we did well on that, too. I know that I had prepped everyone thinking that we were not going to do well in that section. We have a very small number, about- it can range anywhere from 10 up to 30 students that are from across the entire district that receives ELL services, and so, there are 18 criteria. The biggest piece for our district is that the state is now changing, just like they're overhauling everything from MCAS to PARCC and new educator models. It's that time that they're also reworking and retooling the assessment, the curriculum, instructional practices for English and English learner immersion. practices for English and English learner immersion. So the test is going to be the access test, which really focuses on comprehension and communication for English students, you know, for English across the state to state and that's our ELL and that's going to be in lieu of the MEPA. And, um, and basically our biggest piece of this is going to be continuing to have our staff trained. The goal for the state is that every single teacher within every district receives all sheltered immersion instruction. So just like teachers receive training in terms of special education and Title 1 and 504 and general ed, there's a real movement in terms of our English language learners. And there has been movement, but now that they're, they're, it's a whole different level because now they're part of the World Class Instructional Design Assessment Consortium and so Massachusetts is, is moving to a whole different level in terms of that assessment and working with students who are English language learners. So where we're really weakened is that we don't have enough and so we don't have, ideally the state would like to have any native language of a student that may be within your district that you would also have a staff member that also speaks the native language. So we struggle in those types of areas, but where we're able to, you know, compensate is we do our contracting through North River Collaborative because we don't have full-time people, we have part-time people that work with our students and then we also abut Brockton and so we're able to access some of the work that gets done because they have whole department in terms of, of ELL. And so we're able to access translations and access, you know, when a student, if we're wondering if they need evaluations conducted, is it a, a English, you know, understanding the English language or is it possibly a disability in a certain area? We're able to access people that can help us in terms of navigating through those challenges of evaluators and things of that sort. So I will be continuing to do corrective action plans as we do, whether you have one or two or 10 or 15 areas that you have to work on, I'll be continuing to work on that with our staff as well as in the area of ELL, Special Ed and Civil Rights. So any questions on that? All right, great. Next, um, we had a lot of summer work that was done in curriculum areas this, this year. You may have this in your packet, in terms, looks like this and it has everything listed. I'll give you a little sampling, okay. For work done, we had guitar class, grades 10 to 12, we had creating and publishing the curriculum for Immigration, Ancestry and Archaeology in grade 12, creating and publishing the curriculum for State of the Union in grades 11 and 12, planning the first year data teams, Sestron 1 in grades pre-K to 4, planning for data teams, grades 5 through 6, preparation for around the standards of mathematical practices in grades 7 through 12, accelerated grade 7 map and materials and mathematics, quantitative literacy in grade 12, creating and publishing common assessments for middle school social studies in grades 7 and 8, vertical teaming and realigning curriculum for the Common Core in grade 9, updating the pre-K to 4 writing curriculum map, including pacing, Common Core Storytown and Common Assessments in grades pre-K to 4, creating templates to add curriculum to the network, grades pre-K to 4, middle school math differentiated instruction, grades 7 to 8, and lastly, middle school Common Core consultation and things of that sort that Meg Doherty was working on with Mark Rubado. So that are, those are some of the things that our staff members worked on throughout the summer in terms of moving forward with curriculum. All right? So that's more informational. Any questions? And our last update is about our Extended School Year Summer Program. As you're all aware, as we have students who are in special education programs and if needed, they may need an extended school year, which means they go to school up to five weeks and they receive services that work on their specific goals according to their IEP plans. So this year, Sarah Bullman was the director of the program. It went really well. We had, it ran from July 2nd to August 2nd, from 8:30 to 11:30. We had 78 students attend. We had 25 that did not show up, so we did have over 100 that were scheduled to be there. However, for a combination of parents decided at the end, you know, to not, you know, send their children or the, there was just no shows, so we don't know why they chose not to come. But we had 30 staff working and that included teachers, pairs and service providers. Service providers range from behaviorists to speech and language to OTPT, et cetera. And then we had teachers as well as pairs that are working with our special education students. We also had three volunteers that were great and the staff were appreciative that they were there. And all of this is around preventing regression and so in everyone's folder, they were able to, their IEP file, they were able to show, you know, the progress that they made, you know, this is a quick sample, but Extended Monitoring, Extended School Year Monitoring Form. So the teacher would write specifically what goal they were working on with each student day to day, week to week, parents would receive that and then there would be also an attendance sheet so that we were, we'd be able to tell the parent or whomever, you know, that your child was signed up for five weeks, however, they only attended such and such a day, or they attended all the whole entire time during the Extended School Year Program. So this is information that we use to, to have conversations at team meetings and then to, once again, adhere to the IEP laws around Extended School Year Programming.
Program took place at Beaver Brook and then we had, not to confuse with the other program, we had an academic summer school at Abington High School, which you'll be getting an update on. So a lot happened over the summer.
And they also did, it was at Frollo as well, so kids that are transitioning up to 7th and 8th grade. And as you know, I mean, very, very, very small class sizes, you couldn't get any better. In some classes, you had two kids to one teacher and the max that we had was 10 students to a teacher with a pair in some cases, depending upon the needs of the students. So they were really ideal circumstances, situations, and that's what you want because these are students that, you know, you try to avoid per, you know, it's the whole piece regarding avoiding regression.
And we're required to provide that special education summer, summer school program the way Dr. Thomas outlined it because of their educational plans and that's what we provide as a district because we're required to do that. And then the academic summer school that took place for the secondary program was a self-pay so that those parents pay for their children to be in that program and you'll get an update on that later. So it was a busy summer. I say this every year, my dad asks me what it's like to have the summer off and I don't know what it's like to have summer off.
Actually, the summer's busier in many ways.
This leads right into mine.
It's really busy. All right, so any questions on that?
Is there any plan to follow, I'm sorry, is there any plan to follow up? Why are those 25 students didn't attend or should, or should there be?
Um, a couple we've already followed up on because, because we need to. And then in terms of other cases, it's conversations at the table. Just like school, I can't force a parent to bring a child to school, you know, it is the law, but I can't force you to do it. However, there are mechanisms set in place with, um, summer schools, you don't have to. So we, it's offered and then it's up to a parent. But in some cases, we do have parents that will dispute, you know, my child needs more time, yada, 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 and then we're able to say, you know, but we gave you five weeks in terms of, we agree that they need to work on those goals and for, you know, regression, but if you chose to send them to baseball camp for three out of the five weeks, you know, that's a decision that you made as a family, not that the team made. So it's those types of things and why we need the documentation also to have those conversations. But overall, you know, we have very appreciative parents that are thankful that we have their children for those five weeks and we're able to give them, you know, intense services during those three hours and provide them with the, the supports that they need. But we do follow up on that and the teachers do follow up on that because there are some kids that, you know, all schools, we should really be 12 months if you think about it. It would prevent a lot of issues that we have. However, because every child regresses, if you don't read it all, you know, during the whole summer, you come back and you're a little sleepy come September.
Jamie, you didn't look like you were in favor.
She might know something about that. See, I can't even imagine that because I love to read, but you're, you're right, you know, I have those conversations with my children who don't share the same love all the time. But yeah, so we do follow up on that.
Thank you.
My question was the same question I actually had too. That and then not having a quarter of the, you know, your attendance and thinking, does that, you know, really change the program at the last minute?
Well, I think that's a very good point because we've talked about this, is we have to plan in advance and so we ask parents to please confirm, but staff members, especially teachers, look for jobs, you know, during the summer. So they need to know and they are told, you know, in April and in early May and they're asking in March. So we hold off as late as we can to say, you know, this is the projection, this is what we have for how many students we'll need. And then we also get the approval or the confirmation from parents, but there are some that don't confirm or there are some that do confirm and then cancel out. So it does impact. We are going to be looking at it, you know, to try to do it a little differently, to try to get more of a commitment at the IEP meetings because again, we may not need as many staff members, you know, depending upon the numbers. But it's still a win-win. I mean, honestly, I look at it, if you have a child that's on an IEP, you have a child with a disability and, and so they need supports. And so if we're able to give them the supports in very small classrooms, that's a win-win for that child, that family and for the school district because the goal is independence and the goal is a diploma. So, you know, as, as I agree with you, you know, from a financial standpoint, could we cut a few teachers? Um, you know, sure, but if you look at the financial piece and then the win-win, it's really a wash, but if we continue to have this type of drop, you know, we would have to, you know, be more militant with, with families. But overall, you know, parents do have it right and I understand, kids don't want to go an extra five weeks. So they're trying to balance, you know, you gotta go for a couple of weeks, but we'll also send you to camp for a couple of weeks. I get the other side of it, but at the same time, you know, the district has adhered to complying with the law.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now we'll move on to the, is that, you all set?
I'm done. Thank you.
Report from the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. Um, kind of going off of Dr. Thomas's theme of a busy summer, it was a very busy summer. I'm going to just take a second to thank some of the people that, that worked very hard this summer and much of those is the same as, as Peter's, but I would just like to take a second. Jason Lynn and Lance Hammond in Maintenance, Aaron Hyer and D.O. Gonzales in Technology, all the head custodians and their crews, Bernie Darcy, the Food Service Director and now the Coordinator of Custodial Services, Carol Carney and Ann Pecoraro in Transportation, Deb Keo, Paulette Batson, Lynette McNeil and Teresa in the Superintendent's Office and the Building Principals and their Secretaries for all their work this summer in, in getting us ready and the buses came today and as Peter reported, everyone got to school and everyone got home safely. There have been other years that we've been sitting at the ECC at the time, Office, 4:15, 4:30, waiting for the call from the bus company that all the buses have arrived back at the bus yard meeting, all students have been dropped off and today, although school got out, we changed the time, school got out 15 minutes earlier, the, all the buses arrived back by 4 o'clock, which was, which was huge. So, um, thank you to everybody. Uh, this is a first, this was the first summer in four years that we haven't opened or closed a school or moved significant parts of schools around. So it was a different type of pace this summer. One of the, one of the nice things that happened was it was an opportunity for the Maintenance Department and the Custodial Staff to be able to do those preventative maintenance and general repair type of projects that in the past few years, we haven't had the opportunity to do because it was about moving, reconfiguring, new telephone drops, new computer, um, computer drops. So a lot of general maintenance and preventative maintenance was able to get done this summer. We also had additional interactive whiteboards installed that were donate, some were donated by that AEF from the PTOs and we're, we're very happy about, about that. Beaver Brook got a significant number of interactive whiteboards installed this summer and also in other schools throughout the district. Computers as they are, there's a series of them every summer that are reimaged and, and put back into classrooms cleaned up and ready to, ready to rock and roll and that happened. And the Technology Department is also working on a centralized printing project in all of the schools and being able to go from your computer and print directly, for example, to a copy machine, which is a lot cheaper per page than it is to print to a classroom printer or even to a, a larger printer in a library, for example. So they've been working very hard on, on software and, and equipment that will need that in the long run will save us a lot of money on toner and, and printer costs. And in closing really with the facilities, the, we toured the buildings on Friday, we were in the schools yesterday and today, I thought they looked great. The custodians did a really nice job. Part of our, our budget kind of consolidation that we did towards the end of the school year was to limit the number of summer staff that we had historically, we've hired high school students to work with the custodians and we significantly, significantly limited that this summer. And, you know, you always get concerned when you're walking around the buildings in July, towards the end of July, thinking are they going to get it done in three weeks or three and a half weeks? And, and they did. And the custodians and Maintenance Department just did a fabulous job with, with limited crews getting the buildings ready, so thank you to them.
Steps at the Frollo looked great.
Steps at the Frollo, thank you. That was, um, the steps at the Frollo, we're very happy with how those turned out and we're really hoping that it'll, will prevent the water that we had that was penetrating from behind those stairs and even though there were so many broken stairs and the peeling coverings, so yes, thank you. They, they came out very nice.
And just, that was money we had set aside.
Yes, thank you. That was money that was set aside from last fall's special town meeting that should be used on building envelope projects, that included those steps. We've done some other masonry work at schools and we have some other projects that we'll be doing in the coming months, one of which may be some repair to the PKS room roof.
And those steps needed to be done, not only because it was becoming difficult to walk on them in the cracks, but you know, inside the building, behind those steps, we were, we were getting water penetration. So that would need to be stopped before that became a problem.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the facilities? Building Committee update? Since our last meeting in June, we, I'm happy to report that the Mass School Building Authority in their July meeting officially invited the Abington Public Schools in the Town of Abington to collaborate with them on a feasibility study. And just coming directly from the Executive Director, and I think this is important, he wants to emphasize that this invitation for a feasibility study is not approval of a project, but an invitation to the district to work with the MSBA to explore potential solutions. So, and like we've been saying, we go into this feasibility study with our Building Committee with a number of options or unlimited options in terms of renovation or building of a new school building. And I also think it's important to reiterate and I have before, the School Building Authority is not going to, after we do this feasibility study, say, and the Abington, Town of Abington will do this. It's really a partnership with the MSBA, with a designer architect that will walk with us through the next 18 months, developing what is the most educationally appropriate, fiscally responsible solution to our problem. And our identified problems are overcrowding at the elementary school and inappropriate classroom space at the middle school. Now, as Peter has talked about, those solutions could range from a number of different configurations for middle school, a middle high school, a high school and middle school move into the high, there's really unlimited possibilities in terms, well, not unlimited, but there are numerous possibilities in terms of what in the end could be recommended to the MSBA as the most educationally responsible, fiscally responsible, educationally appropriate solution. So the money was allocated at the special, the election in the, at the ballot box in the spring and we had our fir, and then we were invited, officially invited in November and we had our first official kickoff meeting of the School Building Committee last week. There's approximately 20.
Officially invited in July.
What I thought, yeah, we're officially at the July, sorry, the July MSBA meeting. We had our first meeting last week with the School Building Committee, which was, which is made up of approximately 23 volunteers. Some are school department employees, some are town employees, there's also members of the Board of Selectmen, school committee. the Board of Selectmen, school committee. And the MSBA tells us about nine of the positions that we have to have. There has to be a town manager, has to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, has to be a member of the school committee, has to be a building principal, has to be superintendent of schools, and then, and a few other ones. And then the rest are volunteers from the community. So the first charge of the School Building Committee is to put out a request for services, otherwise known as an RFS. RFS for an owner's project manager, I'm trying not to use acronyms, Dr. Thomas. For an owner's project manager, which will help us manage the project. It's a requirement, it's a required by the MSBA to work with an owner's project manager. I'm completing the request for services this week. That'll then be advertised. We will have a select, we have a selection committee, we'll have interviews, and then we'll select an owner's project manager. Once we have an owner, so that takes probably till the middle of October. And then we have to bring that selection to the School Building Authority for their approval at a meeting November 10th. So we're trying to work backwards from November. Once that's approved by the MSBA, then we advertise for a designer architect. And it goes through the same type of process, request for services. We do that with the owner's project manager. They help us select the designer who does, they, the designer actually is the majority of the cost of the feasibility study. They do my, the facility study portion of it along with us. They do, they really do the bulk of the study with the, with the building committee. So we can anticipate having a designer architect and an owner's project manager onboard with us in five to six months. That's the estimate that we get from this MSBA. At that time, then we'll really start the meat and potatoes work of the feasibility study. We are looking to have the feasibility study completed by the spring of 2014, with a recommendation, whether it be renovation or building of a new school, ready for a spring town meeting of 2014. That's our goal, so we're trying to work backwards from that. That's my update.
Great.
Are there any questions? Oh, chairperson of the--
That's what I was going to say.
You can.
Go ahead.
At the, thank you, at the, the School Building Committee voted for a chairman of that committee, Richard Tessa? Testa is the chairman of that committee, and if people would like to contact him, Teresa Minahan has his contact information. And we'll be giving, the committee itself, members of the committee will be giving regular updates at school committee meetings, Board of Selectmen's meetings, et cetera.
It's important that people understand that this is a town committee for a school building. This is not a school department committee. And MSBA purposefully designed it that way, because of their successful experiences in towns. They, they know that you need to have all of the people and all of the representatives in a town together and on the same page if you're going to, if you're going to build a school for that town. Because the school, a school building is a town building. It's a, it's a town building committee for a school. It's important that everybody understand that, especially people in the community. It's not a school department committee, it's a town committee. And Richard Testa was appointed the chair of that committee.
He was voted.
The other night.
He's also, he's also the school council at Beaver Brook, and I worked with him this summer, actually, on interviewing team when we hired Danielle Kay as the new assistant principal, and he's really a nice guy, very vested. I think he's going to be perfect for that role.
I think just because he's a parent, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to new business, establishing the next school committee meeting. Our next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, September 25th at 7:00 PM, and we are being handed out dates for the school year, for the rest of the school committee meetings. We are September 25th, then we'll move on to October 23rd, November 27th, January 8th, January 29th, February 26th. We're now into 2013, obviously. March 26th, April 23rd, May 28th, and we'll wrap our school year up on June 18th, 2013. Thanks, Teresa. Approval of a council, looking for a motion to approve all accounts as presented or amended?
Before, before, if you get to the point where you're going to ask for an adjournment, just, I may need you help, Teresa. The AEF golf tournament, we should probably tell people.
Yes.
Sorry.
I think Jeff Porcello or some of the members were actually at the open houses as well, so.
And people can get the brochure.
On their website.
On their website, which is The golf tournament is on Monday, September 24th. The Abington Public Schools are a great cause, so consider golfing on September 24th.
Yeah, AEF supports quite a bit in the schools with their grants and everything. Yes? If not, we'll look to, for an adjournment to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective bargaining proposals and updates, and not to return to public session. And by rule call, correct?
Yes.
Kathy's yes? Amy, yes? Alan, yes?
Yes.
Tom, yes? Adjoining.[1797.63]